Hey Dorothy.
So do we have everybody?
Hey, Ms. Tran, you there?
Dorothy, my name is Van Tran.
Hey Van, um, how about Ms. Knight, you there Ms. Knight?
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, you are a little bit far away from the phone.
I'll try to speak a little louder, is that alright?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, we're gonna call the March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty work session to order. You've had a chance to look at the work session agenda, plus the regular session agenda, and because it's a little bit unique, we will take our time, there's, I think, one citizen in the audience, and the rest of it's pretty straightforward. So we will take our time and we'll walk through it. So item one on the work session agenda is introduction of arbitrator Andre, and I'm gonna pronounce that name wrong.
Marie Rose.
Oh, just like I said, okay, Marie Rose, well actually you can get that. Well Andre, why don't you come out and talk to us a little bit?
Sure.
Well, actually Mayor, if I could, I was gonna have Essie introduce him, just to tell you a little bit about.
Bobbi, this is staging the.
Not by you.
But don't touch Tony.
Yes, ma'am. This is Andreas Marie Rose, and he is here because he's interested in being arbitrated. He's worked with the city, I think, about five years, maybe even longer. And he's our city's solicitor, when Jerry Patrick didn't hear, he fills in for him. And I think he's a great guy, and that's why I mentioned him to you for this position.
Okay.
Andreas.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, just, someplace up there where they can hear you, probably right there, because to be honest, we can hear you, but the people on the speakerphone probably have the worst time. And.
Okay. V is gonna give you a chance, so it's closer to the mic as well.
And obviously what we're looking for is, in our cave enforcement situation, you know, when you go to a normal court, the prosecutor, you know, leads the charge, and there's a process for that. And our citizens on a cave enforcement case aren't prepared. And this isn't a DUI or something where somebody has their own attorney. Um, we want to give them, you know, a little bit more of the Judge Judy side, where, you know, we have our side, they have their side. An arbitrator, you know, gets to ask tough questions, and hopefully reach some solutions that make sense for both parties. And that way our citizen gets treated well. Personally, some of the evidence that we introduce is less than admirable, you know, in both in terms of how we collect it, and B in terms of how we present it, and I think we rely on the court a lot. This pretty much gives us a little bit of an easier, I'll say easier, maybe more even opportunity. Um, I would like to give it a whirl. And, you know, Essie's recommended you. And we've got your resume in front of us, is that in everybody's package as well?
Yes, sir.
You know, does, go ahead, just talk a little bit about yourself.
Um, well, like Essie said, I have been filling in here as a solicitor when Jerry Patrick had other things to do for probably the last five years, and I've worked with at least two of the judges, I believe Judge Freeman was on the bench at one point when I first started, and then with Crandall, Judge Bray, who I was actually in practice with some years ago. My office is now moved to Riverdale, East of Highway one. And I've been in Clayton County.
She just can't help herself.
She wants to see this.
Stand by, conference.
Go. We're gonna have all kinds of technology by the time we're done.
It's forced us to use every device that we have, so, um, like I was saying, I've been in Clayton County since two thousand.
Turn that plug in now.
Can you mute it, ma'am?
Well, she can hear it through the phone, so they're strong.
The feedback is interfering and competing with a thing that is.
I'm sorry, I think I corrected that. Is that better?
She might, you probably can tell her to use her phone on the other side, so you won't hear what she has going on.
How about that, does that work?
As far as I can tell, no one is speaking at this point, so let's, let's allow him to continue.
Give her more.
Um, so I've been in the county since, uh, I started as a prosecutor in the solicitor's office with Keith Martin since two thousand and three. I was the attorney for Victor Hill, in-house counsel for the sheriff's office during his first term, and then I went private practice probably about two thousand eight. So I've been around for a while, um, I was a prosecutor in the solicitor's office probably for about three or four years. In reference to what you're doing here, you know, even the occasions that I've filled in for Jerry, when we would have code enforcement cases on the calendar, you could tell that most of the people who had those type of charges felt a little intimidated, because for one, they were in a courtroom full of other people with different type of charges, you know, more serious issues, not saying code enforcement issues aren't serious, but nobody's getting locked up for that. So, um, separating those things probably would put it on a better level field for the residents, because at that point, it won't be as intimidating, and they may have a better chance at arguing their side of the case, because I know that when we have a regular trial calendar, we're trying to move through this very quickly. And you have officers here, and you have some people that don't appreciate that they're here, so they get a little bit irate. And, you know, all those things probably can interfere with the person who's thinking, okay, I got charged with having a vehicle out in front of my driveway, too many vehicles in the driveway, my grass wasn't, you know, cut low enough for some trash pickup, wasn't it done? And most of the times that I've been involved in those cases, um, people just weren't prepared, and they didn't bring pictures. The code enforcement officers, of course, had all of their documents, they always do, but they didn't bring pictures, they didn't bring evidence, they didn't bring other people to testify for them. So separating is probably a very good idea, and it would also give the prosecutor the opportunity to work with them a lot. I'd have more time, or whoever it is, would have more time to try to work things out, because sometimes you find that the reason why these citizens are getting these citations is because they've had things going in their life that led to these. Now, of course, I had a situation with these people who were some visual outliers, and they weren't going to do right, no matter how many times you gave them citations.
Those are the people we wanna catch, but the others, over a period of time, you build up a resentment in your population, and it's because the system appears very rigged, you know, it's not fair. And then, of course, we have, you know, a multiple language, different things where it makes it a little bit complicated, even though you can say something's available, but is it really? And then how frustrating is it before you just simply give in? And at that point, the, you know, the power of the government is very obsolete, and we just wanna say, I'm interested in kinder and gentler, until a point where maybe they need to have a garage to court, and then they can meet Jerry, and then Jerry does what Jerry does best, and then we're fine, and we don't have to follow that. But by picking those other citizens, that we know that's not, it's just not fair. So we want a fair arbitrator, somebody who trains some of our cave enforcement folks, I mean, you're giving them a little credit. I've seen some of the evidence they introduced, okay, you know, if everybody wants to be polite today. But it would never have passed a superior court, you know, where they would've said, tell me what you really have. And this way, you know, I'm not anticipating they're gonna get remarkably better, but it does give our other guys a shot.
Correct, yeah. And I find that a lot of the times when these people come to have these citations, they are not necessarily under the impression that they're wrong for, that they're not wrong for whatever they're doing. They look at enforcement as harassment, and some, you just kinda gotta get it across, you know, if all of your neighbors did this, what would be, they're thinking singular, this is my property, I should be able to do what I love with property. And so some talking, some coaxing, usually you can get a, you can get to a resolution in most cases, if you have the time to do that.
And that's, it's not a backing off and not being, you know, tough about what we want, but it is about giving you some due process abilities that we don't think are in the system. Any questions, anybody wanna start? Renee, you have any questions?
I appreciate his response, I didn't hear the context of your question that he replied to.
And I'm gonna apologize.
Probably a statement, not a question anyway, but.
I'm gonna apologize too, because Renee's my first name, so you were saying that, that's your topic.
No, it was Councilman, uh, Council Lady Knight.
So if you would, for the conference calls.
Your response seemed very clear, however, John sounds, this Mayor Lample sounds, that he's in the distance, so the context of what he was asking you, I appreciated your response, but I did not hear your question.
Can you, can you explain to them what the question was, so they can hear you?
So the, the mayor's question was in relation to this, the process, in reference to how, how it's prosecuted, and from what I got from his questions, he was trying to relate the fact that we wanna make sure that the citizens understand that this is, we're on equal footing in reference to these cases being brought up, because allowing them to come here and that they're being taken advantage of, or they're being harassed. We wanna enforce it, but we don't wanna necessarily hit them upside the head, we wanna be, understand both sides, but still come to a resolution that's gonna be mutual, mutually agreeable to the city and to the citizen. And most of the cases, from my understanding, are gonna be people who have had more than, you know, several chances to, to get this right, and just haven't been able to do it. So the approach, I guess, has to be a little bit, still, a little bit less enforceful, but still compassionate, understanding in reference to their situations, if, if it applies, because we discussed this. Some people just don't know how to do right, no matter how many opportunities you give them. On the, on the other side too, with the prosecution, some of the evidence that's being presented by the code enforcement officers isn't as thorough as it would be, well, let's just say, it's not to the standard that is required by trial, and that would be in municipal court, or in state court, or in superior court. And sometimes the citizen is gonna get convicted, because they're not prepared, and they don't know the process, and some of them would have a better chance if they, if the setting was different, and if we gave them enough time to prepare. And also training those code enforcement officers on what relevant evidence is, and how to present that evidence, and what, what the prosecutor would need, the arbitrator would need, to, you know, basically adjudicate that, if that was incisive, I can't, I'll round a little bit, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Dorothy, you have any questions?
Um, not really a question, but, um, thank you, if, um, Ms. West is recommending you, introducing you, then I know you must be a very kind.
Well, I appreciate that, although I will tell you that I'm scared to death of Ms. West. She'll tell you on several occasions when we've been in court, I called her judge instead of calling the judge judge, so.
I can, I can understand that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tran?
No question.
Qua.
No.
Okay, okay. And my understanding is the process is, is pretty much in place, is that, do you need anything for most outside of that?
Well, I'd like for the, have you had a chance to read over what we came up with?
The process that's been designed, the question is, is when do we start it? So we'll just need to sort of look at what cases we have now, is the transition simply as easy as showing up for a different court? How do we notify them? So the process is ready, it's just deciding internally, when does it begin?
Okay. Because it's an internal situation, unless you just need a formal vote or you want one, then I would say unless anyone has any further questions, we're just gonna allow the staff to proceed, is that okay? Any objections?
Um, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Dorothy Dean. Um, does, does Councilwoman, well, is he in the meeting tonight?
He is.
Yes, I'm here.
He is, okay, I hadn't heard from him.
Yeah, he didn't have any questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So it sounds like we're in agreement, and hearing no objections, we're gonna allow the city to proceed. And I'll look forward to working with you, and we'll, we'll run a call of test cases and see what happens.
Well, I thank you guys for the opportunity, and I'm sure that I will, at some point, get to meet everybody once all this blows over.
Thank you for coming out today.
We'll check hands next time.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hopefully soon.
Continuation of Government Emergency Services Plan, which, of course, with all the issues or the potential issues out there, in both the virus issue as well as potential emergency services, so I'll have Ms. Reddick explain what that is. We realize that's not quite ready for prime time yet, but it's gonna be an explanation as it was.
Good evening, Council. So the continuation of government was drafted by the county, and I think I shared the document with everybody by email, and it is, well, it's draft, I shouldn't know, I'm sorry. It was modeled by the county from a document that was drafted by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and it's a continuation of government that basically commits, after you've identified all of your key players, that after twelve days after any disaster, the government could be up and running again. So it's requiring us to go through every department and identify who that would be, who needs to be online, and what all the pieces are. And it's a real update, if you will, from the previous continuation of government, which didn't even really consider computers, that's how, how the video was. So, um, the document itself is not something we're going to be updating, but the spreadsheets that are referred to in the document as an exhibit or an attachment, that's just something we have to identify, every department, who the key players are, the hierarchy, who gets called first, who gets called second, who gets called third, and so on, and a separate place, like if the whole building blows up, where do you set up shop, what's your alternate location? We have, the old continuation of government didn't consider that. So we just have to, you know, we're working to get those, all those pieces identified, and then we'll be bringing it back for approval, which would not happen for the next council meeting.
Okay, any questions? Councilwoman Knight?
This is, no, this is, uh, Dorothy Dean.
Hey, Dorothy.
Question.
Yes.
Um, on this, um, uh, continuation of the plan, um, we're just, um, voting to, um, get it on the agenda, or?
Well, in this case, it's just a work session item, we want you to be aware of it, and kind of what it means. So whenever someone reads out this as a continuation of Government Emergency Services, we want to bring you just have to speak on the agenda, it would be on the agenda probably the next council meeting.
Okay, now, the continuity of the government plan, I think that's basically the, kind of the same thing, right? But, um, this is like an emergency plan that we're doing tonight?
Um, no, 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 okay, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Go ahead.
So there are two different items. The Emergency Resolution twenty twenty dash zero five is a separate item, and it doesn't appear on the work session agenda, because we just literally got it this morning. The continuation of government, or the continuity of government plan, wasn't an item for discussion tonight. It will not be something you're voting on. So Resolution twenty twenty dash zero five, in the preamble states that it's recognizing what the federal government, the state government, the CDC, and the World Health Department organization, sorry, have declared in terms of states of emergency. We're recognizing that we, we agree with that, and then we're putting out measures for what should happen inside the city tomorrow. Basically, it was built on the model that we received from the Georgia Municipal Association earlier today.
Okay.
So two different things, and have I clarified it well enough?
Cool.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Tran? Van, any questions? Qua.
No question.
Wait.
That's good.
Wait, she had Van ask.
All right, she said no questions.
Okay.
No questions, we'll just have that at the next section. Item number four, sanitation, this deals with a request from our current provider to temporarily delay the pickup of bulk items due to a public health concern, basically the COVID virus nineteen, and the theory that if their workers are picking up these items, that they might transfer some of that issue. The concern that we had was, if that's valid, would the garbage company agree to a reduction in our price now that?
So we have not gotten the confirmation that it would in fact result in a reduction in price. So, you know, when you, if you were to vote on it tonight, you could precondition it to a reduction of price, because without having had a discussion with them about what even, the, the contract doesn't identify that service priced out separately. Um, so we, I have no idea, I would not even know how to guess what that reduction would be. But what we know is what they're suggesting now for the COVID nineteen has not included a reduction in price.
Any comments?
Uh, I do, Dorothy Dean, you're saying temporary delay, um, do we know, is it a given amount of time, or is it just until?
Not currently, but that certainly is something we could add. In other words, right now, you just made the asking, right? And then the question comes down, he might have a valid concern, but if he does, first, we wanna know that we're not gonna pay for it, second, we wanna know what the duration is. And now, I think, it's two things we could give the duration to the city manager that says we'll consider it, if, if we get a reduction, and only for a certain period of time.
Okay.
This is, uh, Councilwoman Knight, my concern would be also notifying residents, um, we would need to make sure that there's a very clear understanding that bulk items cannot sit on the curb until service resumes. You know, I live in a neighborhood where, you know, I have quite a few neighbors who are very consistent with their bulk items, more than two items, and so I would want there to be a clear plan in how we're going to address and communicate the fact that there is a disruption in that service, so that we don't have, um, items sitting on the curb.
Agreed.
So one thing, just again, as you speak, Councilwoman Knight, you know, we, that could be one of the stipulations is that we require them to, to pay for a mail-out, but as you all know, that we may notify them by mail, every individual household, but they may still put the items out, and that would just be sort of an internal job then, to have our code enforcement officer go to the house and tell them to bring the items back until the pickup resumes. And I would suggest that if you, if you didn't want to consider, well, if you wanted to consider it with no deduction, you wouldn't do it for any longer than Governor Kemp's timeline, April the sixth. So that would be basically two more pickups. Anything beyond that, I would say, if you're looking at a reduction, you may consider the two weeks without a reduction, but anything beyond that, maybe consider a reduction.
Any other questions? Ms. Qua?
No.
Councilwoman Tran? Any questions?
This is Councilwoman Tran, I am afraid that we're just going to make the decision whether, when we hear from the contractor whether or not, if we're not providing the service to our customer, what would our customer be getting a credit for the time that we not afford to, to provide the service that we promised?
Agreed. One, one concern I have is, no matter what timeframe we're speaking about, whether it's the governor's emergency response or the presidential response, in, in no way do we have a cure for this virus. In which case, you could make this argument for a very, very long time, and based on the statistical data that's out there, we wouldn't be talking weeks, we'd be talking much longer, if he really has the argument. And at some point, you just have to say, I'm afraid you're gonna have to come up with a better way to pick this up. In other words, we know they're wearing gloves, we know they're wearing other types of things, and there's a lot of debate as to whether this virus can survive on a surface for anywhere from fifteen seconds to nine hours, you know, there's a lot of debate in the scientific world on that, we've heard some ourselves. So I would be open to listening to what the garbage company was willing to, to provide, but I would encourage them to say, this, this is a long-term solution for them as a company. You know, the world changed just a little bit, they're gonna have to change with it as well, if they intend to provide the service. And I don't think this is going away in two weeks. So, you know, what, what methods are they gonna take to, to make this work? So, you know, I wanna be helpful, but there is no cure. And I think in today's world, we have to adjust to, just, just like we're sitting here today, we're all separated by six feet, I don't think that's going away for a while. See, I don't see the emergency, I understand the health concern, and I understand taking a little bit of time to adjust to that health concern, and then I'm open to the total discussion. But Councilwoman Knight has a really good point, we're gonna have to wait and have that on the curb within a week, and the city's not gonna look very good.
And if I may, reminding ourselves that our contract identifies two items only, and we know that we often see more than that laid out. So I would encourage us to remember that in this negotiation of how it moves forward, it may result in they literally only pick up two items and leave everything else.
What were the two items?
It, it listed in the contracts, it could be a mattress, it could be a.
A two particular items, just I want two.
Yes, two items, two, two items. Uh, it shouldn't be bagged garbage, and, but it can't be a stack of five mattresses or five chairs, and, you know, it's literally, if you put a table and chair out there for pickup, they pick the table and a chair, and they satisfy their contract. So again, all that's part of the discussion, I just wanna remind us that that may start to happen.
Okay.
Um, this is, uh, Dorothy Dean, uh, question, have we spoken to any other city managers or city officials about how they are going to resolve this issue, if they have the same issue that we have?
No, actually, I haven't spoken to any, uh, city managers specific to this, which I certainly can. Now, we don't know if this is an advanced disposal proposal, or if this is every waste management company.
An industry.
An industry standard, yeah. But I can certainly, certainly make some phone calls.
Yeah, I, because we're all in the same county, and as the gentleman said, all of our stuff is going to the same landfill on the county. So, you know, if we can get a handle on it, and someday we come together with it, you know, that'd be the right answer, I think.
Well, and just, uh, an interesting thing to know is that the larger waste management companies often own their own landfills, so, um, smaller companies may use Clayton counties, but bigger companies like Advance or Republic, they're gonna own their own landfills.
So it's having to be a little more discussion then, I realize it's three weeks between now and the next time we have a meet, we're just gonna have to play that one by ear just a little bit, because we just don't have that yet.
Sure, and would the council want to consider authorizing you to negotiate, or simply wait till the next meeting? Anybody having?
Well, my fear would be, if the guy really is concerned about it, he's simply just not gonna pick it up. You know, so it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a catch point too. If, if he, if he's gonna wait to continue to do it, it couldn't have been that big of an emergency, you know? But, um, just leaving it there creates a bottom for us to eat. So I don't, I don't see easy answers, any, any thoughts?
Well, this is Dorothy Dean, if we, if that is going to be the case, can't we notify the citizens in advance that this is probably gonna be what's gonna happen in the near future, and as we negotiate with the company?
Yes.
To let them know that, you know?
I think if they back out, they're part of the agreement, we have no choice but to, to make, to have them. You know, but it does take a little bit to get something in their hands, you know, even to turn around and pick the papers, it's still, you know, a weak process at best.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions on that item? Okay, we'll, we'll do the best we can.
So our takeaway at this point, this is Councilwoman Knight, so our takeaway at this point is what? We are going to authorize, we are interested in authorizing a negotiation on the front end, or are we more interested? Or are we more interested in understanding the fiscal impact of us giving them a break for obvious health reasons? But the economic impact for us as well, are we going to wait for that?
Well, let's, let's, let's give the staff the opportunity to negotiate, um, in due respect, on all parties. I mean, if it's a, it's an emergency industry wide, I, I think we have a problem. Um, but just accepting that as the final solution, I don't think works. So I think we just, we give them a little bit of room and, and see what we can negotiate. Is that okay?
It is. And, and so to my point again, I just want to drive it home. I think we're all clear, but I never would want to assume we have to communicate clearly with residents so that we don't have a different issue arise.
Agreed. So if, if they, if they inform us that they will not pick it up, which is kind of our obligation that they have, uh, then we will engage and send something out to the residents immediately as soon as we can. And then we'll negotiate from there. If it's a process of negotiation, then we'll negotiate and, and ask and stuff down until we, we know differently or we need and we approve something. Is that okay?
Yes.
Ms. Tran, do you agree?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Clark?
Okay.
Good. All right. Uh, the next item is also on the agenda in the regular session and it's basically just kind of promoting the small business assistance section that we've done. Uh, and I'm gonna let, um, the, the city manager kind of update us as to where we are. Uh, some of this hasn't been implemented, but we, we need, uh, authorization to, to, to kind of, uh, enact it.
And so we're, as the mayor mentioned, we're simply ratifying something that has in part already started to happen. As I mentioned in an email earlier today, and I'll say again, you know, this, this, our information is ever-changing. It's a, it's a speed, it's a game of speed. And, uh, we're trying to update it and get it out as soon as we can. Um, so as you read on the small business assistance plan in your packet, uh, where we, you know, use our billboards that are on the interstates to promote local businesses. Uh, we've extended the deadline for occupational tax or business license fees. Um, we've extended the deadline for sanitation fees to June first, which will include residential customers as well as commercials. So commercial pay on a monthly basis. So that's really two extensions for them. Uh, the city, uh, of course, we will allow, as the state allows, anybody who owns a restaurant that serves beer and wine to sell that beer and wine in an unopened package. Uh, and as I mentioned here, that's in compliance with the state rules and regulations, which we can confirm by the GMA's uh, draft model, uh, resolution that also says that everyone can, uh, extend that courtesy to their restaurants. We will allow, um, lighted signs to flash and scroll, which is currently something that's not allowed in the sign code and may be something you all want to ultimately change. Um, we are, um, lifting any restrictions on signage, the timelines for temporary signs or banners. And, um, we've, we're working to publish a newsletter that's geared towards sort of the business process, what it means to be a small business, what the, all the steps we're taking and allowing them to, uh, place a free adv- advertisement in the newsletter. The, the hiccup we're, we're finding there is there are so many businesses that are closed that we don't have alternate ways to get in touch with them. So we're, we're gonna have to work that out. The mayor and I have been discussing about that. And then of course, um, just using our, our sense of reasonability and when we have staff that may have less to do, for example, at the Morrow Center, where every event has canceled, at least through the end of March, that we use that staff to reach, make some phone calls and reach out to people. Well, I think one of the biggest initiatives in this small business plan is to show the community that we, we get it. It's, it's a tough time and we're here for them and we want to do whatever we can to help them. And nothing says that better than a personal phone call. So we have four hundred and one businesses on the list and currently I think we've gone through, we have spoken to two hundred. That we've made twice that many phone calls, but not everybody is available or has called us back. So.
Excellent, excellent. A- any questions? Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Knight?
No, no question.
Ms. Dean?
Uh, one question regarding the newsletter. Is that just for business purposes or will it be going?
So, uh, I appreciate that question. It will actually be delivered to every resident, but it's focused on a business perspective, if that makes sense. So, you know, reminding them what's here, reminding them what resources they have in the city. Uh, Mayor Michael, if you want to add to that, uh, I don't know.
Well, it's a little bit of an update like a traditional newsletter would be, but it's not, it's not a warm and fuzzy newsletter because it's not a real phony time, right, pretty serious. So any type of, you know, regular type of information where we're showing what we've done, the processes we've done, an update if we will. But at the back of that, you know, as we come through this, we're gonna have some businesses out there that took a pretty serious hit. And none of those people don't have a job today. And, and the last time this happened, uh, it took a long time to basically find our feet. So we've got to worry about our small businesses, the larger businesses have a little bit better of a cushion, you know, they've got some insurance maybe for lots of business. Uh, but those small players do not. Whatever we can do to keep that moving forward is in our best interest. Otherwise you end up with a default by a, a, a tenant, if you will. It might take five months to a year to unlock that lease and that property to get it back into play. And then by then we have a significant number of vacancies. And then of course your price drops and, and all kinds of bad ideas happen. So the idea is to, to just as quickly as we can reemphasize they're important to us and do whatever seemingly possible to make that happen. Any other comments, Ms., Ms., um, Dorothy, any other comment?
None, um, none, other than if this is gonna go out, do we know when it's gonna go out? And if we can piggyback that with, uh, information about sanitation, that would be, um, you know,
That'd be a good idea.
No opportunity there to get the work out.
Well, we don't want it to go out any further than the end of the governor's mandate. In other words, telling people to go shop while you still can't get out is probably not a good idea. So we have to kind of flow through that. We've only reached half the businesses that are available. So we want to give everybody that fair shot. But somewhere in there is your timeline, um, give or take. Um, and then remember that first week right after that is a spring break for basically all of Clayton County. One more thing, shout out to the mailbox, so nobody might be home, might be everybody home, but it might be nobody home if it's truly spring break. But if you're still in quarantine, um, so we want to be a little bit fluid as best we can, realizing we saw the mail. Um, but right now they're not ready to send it out yet anyway, so we'll go ahead.
But I do think, uh, Councilwoman Dean, that, um, most of us know that telling somebody one time is not nearly as effective as telling them many times. So depending on what we negotiate with the waste management company and whether or not we even decided to, to do that, uh, if it's still a viable decision, we can certainly put a blurb about it in the newsletter, whether we contacted every citizen before or not.
Ms. Tran, any questions?
No question. And I am just have a quick reminder, we, it's, it's seven thirty-nine PM. It's past the time we should start on our regular.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Chris Clark?
No question.
Okay. I'm gonna try to hit the next two items real quick just simply because we're gonna be dragging them off and having them up anyway. So the next one is, uh, item six, which is, uh, Vietnam War Memorial. And just bringing you up to date on that, you know, I met with a longtime citizen, uh, Mayor Mr. Ahn, who lives over in Central Park. Um, he is a senior citizen. Uh, he spent, I believe, the better part of a decade and a half in, in a, in a military prison. Um, these are folks who worked really hard, um, a lot of it out of Savannah, um, and, and working with the American military. They asked us to be able to provide, uh, a, 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 a spot, if you will, um, somewhere on city property. We already have a war memorial out there up front, which was dedicated in nineteen ninety-three. Um, and we thought that that would be a good service to both the American side as well as the NISA. Um, since then, uh, we've met with seven additional members of that group and they have a little spot out there on the left side, if you will. Um, and all we're trying to do is formalize that to be able to authorize the city to, to give them a permit. Uh, the sign or the, the mark, the marker, if you will, you've seen a picture of it. It's a cast bronze. Uh, the base of that is, is four feet by four feet. Underneath that would be a, a granite type of marker, which would be eight feet by eight feet dedicated to. Um, and I think anything that we can do that, uh, especially in the past, having dealt with Veterans Day and other things that the city's participated in, um, and all we're doing is providing them the space they were ready for funds and, and deliver the marker, um, etc. I'm just, for that request. Any questions?
If, if I may add one thing, one of the things in the grant world that funders are always looking for are previous partnerships that didn't require grant funds. So if this group in Morrow decides to make this decision, that is an excellent example of a public-private partnership and it has a war theme and could be considered public art. So I see this as, as an excellent leverage point to, we've got the memorial out there, we're gonna add another one, why not, uh, you know, it could be a garden, if you will, either just there in the plaza or expand it throughout the City Hall campus. So I just, I just wanted to, you know, say that because it was, it definitely be something I would recommend you, you all approve.
Any questions?
Yeah, I didn't hear exactly where it's gonna be placed.
If, if you walk up the sidewalk between the trees and you go up to the current marker that's there, there's a triangular shaped sidewalk. It would be to the left of that, there is currently a, um, a bench that's sitting there. There's three oak trees and one of those oak trees is dead and it's only about sixteen inches across. Um, once that came down, that should come down anyway for a lot of safety reasons, they would put it right there. We got existing, uh, space and we also have existing electrical out there. Uh, this might take them anywhere from six months to two years to be able to raise the funds for it. These are not inexpensive, um, you know, but, but again, we're not responsible for that cost. We're just providing them the opportunity to throw in.
Okay.
Ms. Knight, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Tran?
Uh, I think that the, uh, an I think for the former um, military and we have a lot of Vietnamese, uh, we have a good Vietnamese population here. Um, I just want to make sure the wording for that which should be Vietnam War Memorial.
Correct. In the actual motion to approve, we can be very specific about exactly what it is that they are building, who we're issuing that permit to, uh, quality, different type of like, a lot of that. Ms. Clark?
No question.
Okay. And that will be added on the agenda tonight for a.
And so I, I would imagine that your motion should include that you are offering us to negotiate the details so those things can be dealt with.
Makes sense. The last item before we get to the regular agenda, it, it's really broken apart into two. Uh, it says social media, but there, there are two sections. And one is DMO, uh, and that is a designated marketing organization. Uh, as we correct hotel and motel taxes, we are required by Georgia law to go through or channel our money or, or, or something to that effect through a designated marketing organization. The city of Morrow used to have one years ago. That has been shut down since then and we have worked privately with a number of others. Um, but we would like to set up our own. Uh, that will require basically setting up an existing five oh one C six. Uh, and then from there, you know, putting people on that board, just like other boards we have. Before you can get to who you put on the board, you have to have the five oh one C six. Um, and so that would be one portion of it, which is where we're basically asking for statement qualifications entities that would go through the effort, uh, to tell us what, what their skills and abilities are, how much they charge per hour and the ability to set up a DMO. Any questions? Ms. Knight?
None at this time.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Ms. Tran?
No question.
Ms. Clark?
Okay.
And then the second section of that deals with statement qualifications for basically social media. Uh, and that is where we would have someone on the expert level, if you will, not to be replaced by the individuals who are currently putting this stuff in there. But when you look at the city's total social agenda, we have, um, Facebook media, we have Twitter, we have our city's web pages. Each, each one of those almost operates independently at this point. In other words, the city hall might put one up, public works might not have adjusted theirs in at least a year. Um, we know we have one recently that was still part of the city conference center. Turns out that was under an old group. It wasn't even being managed by us anymore. That has since been updated by Warren. And, and those are just the ones we know. And the idea behind this is basically we're looking for someone to coordinate, who understands, you know, high level English, understands concepts of how these things are, are implemented. And to be able to create us a uniform message and a uniform response, you know, where it's not just pandering, i.e. where we want to put something up because we haven't updated anything in a while, uh, we want a, 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 a general message. Uh, so if you have that, that's a key in terms of, um, what those qualifications would be and we would seek out people who would have that ability. Any questions? Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Knight?
None at this time.
Ms. Tran?
No question.
Councilwoman Clark?
No.
And that will be on the agenda. And all we're approving there is the ability to send out or ask for SOQs. Obviously that's not a bid process. Anybody can basically participate and send us what we have. Uh, we would take a look at what their skills are. We'd have the ability to basically choose those companies. And then from there, we work with the city management to come down with milestones, cost numbers, and, and deliverables. Where we, an example would be, I'm looking for a DMO. The first phase of that might be administering the different sections required through the, um, the IRS to be able to acquire, uh, basically an EIA number or something along those lines. And that's, that might be your total scope. And at that point, maybe the guy says he can do this under twenty-five hours, at whatever dollar they pay per hour. And then what is the time frame for the deliverable? Once that's done, we may not have to choose that individual to, to do the next step because we can choose who we want. Uh, we may choose to do some of that in-house if we still have some staff that is available to us. Um, so the idea is to be flexible, to look for talent at a high level and then, uh, to be able to hold them accountable, um, and to realize that, you know, just because you want, one portion of work list doesn't mean that, that you're going to be here all year. That being said, um, I'm gonna go right into the, um, the regular, um, agenda. Can you bear with me just a little bit?
Uh. Excuse me, the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I'm just looking at the, uh, social media coordinating there for, um, discretion here. It doesn't have the requirement in bachelor's, uh, uh, four-year degree. So could we add that?
She wants to go over the street for whoever has.
Sure.
You've got the top staff, it's easy.
Yeah. Uh, you'll get a chance to pick whoever you use. So even if it's not formally listed in there, whatever talents and abilities they have at this point. All right. That being said, um, I'm, I'm gonna call the March twenty-four, two thousand and twenty, uh, regular meeting to order. And if, uh, I realize that this is kind of a unique time and we may not have the ability for everybody to stand to the pledge or do other things, but we will try to operate as normally here as we can. And that being said, uh, if you'll stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Before we start the agenda tonight, I, I want to point out the obvious, um, the obvious basically being, um, we're in trying times. Um, we have a presidential, um, emergency declarations of the country. We have a lieutenant, our, our Governor Kemp's, uh, emergency declaration, um, for the state. And tonight you will see, you know, the city of Morrow enact something that we've already put in place, but formally, um, get it recognized for some of the things that we're already doing. Um, we realize that there is no cure for this virus. We all understand that a number of people are, are going to become ill. We strongly recommend anyone above the age of sixty-five, please stay home. When you come out and you look at the statistics on this, the, the, if you catch this virus, things are not gonna go well, you know. And we would, we would, because we have a large senior population, uh, we would encourage, you know, that you really consider that, you know, ask family, friends for help. You know, we're going to have some things out soon, uh, which will be some, some bill, I don't wanna say bill, but let's just say some, some yard signs, if you will, that are out. They'll have a phone line on it. let's just say some, some yard signs, if you will, that are out, they'll have a phone on it, they'll have a Facebook page on it. You know, there, there is no pride here, you know, if you need something, ask for it, you know. If you're sick, stay home, if you have a fever, stay home, you know. And then ultimately, the other reality is that we cannot shut the entire world down and, and all go broke. We have people who have to have a job, they have to have a place to live. This city relies on critically our business community. They pay for probably ninety percent of every service that we have. So as, as those stores are closed, our dollar numbers are crashing with that. Now, we make our money a little bit differently, so it's not one hundred percent sales, but it does have an impact that doesn't get felt right today. That impact is, is coming a little bit further. Um, so we would implore you to pay attention, you know, to follow the rules, and then ultimately understand that our local businesses need your support. Okay, that being said, uh, consent agenda, you have before you the approval of the February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty regular minutes, the approval of the March camp, two thousand and twenty regular meeting minutes, the approval of the March camp, twenty twenty work session minutes. Any questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, Lord Dean.
Ms. Dean made a second. I'm gonna call by voice vote, because we can't raise our hands so people can see. So, Ms. Dean? All those in favor say aye, Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Councilman Quah?
Aye.
Motion passed, adjourned. You have before you the reading agenda. I would ask to have, uh, one item added to the agenda, which is the, the item that you received recently, um, and I mean within like the last four hours, and it's the City of Morrow's emergency declaration. Some of those items are already in place, but on advice of, uh, council, uh, we were asked to formally put that in a resolution format that does follow a combination of what is happening at the federal level, the state level, and other items that the city itself has, uh, put into place.
May I read Resolution twenty twenty dash zero five?
Twenty twenty dash zero five. Is there any objection to placing it on the agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve that we added to the agenda?
So move.
Councilman Quah makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear Councilman Tran, all those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye, Councilman Tran?
Aye.
Council, Councilwoman Knight, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Quah?
Aye.
Motion passed, adjourned. We have two public hearings tonight, one is related to the sanitation ordinance, which we've had out now for at least several weeks. Um, we're, we're not gonna pick that ordinance up basically due to the issues at hand, uh, but we will give the audience one more time to, to have a discussion. Um, we, we have a single member in the audience, and she has no discussion, so we'll just go right on. Uh, the second item is a conditional use, uh, public hearing for eighteen thirty-six Mount Zion Road, uh, which is an industrial building, and they wanted to continue to do or establish an automobile service in that section. Item number four is where the city council is going to hear the recommendations from the planning and zoning board, and, and make a motion one way or the other to that effect. Um, basically under the public hearing?
Mayor, if
We, we have the actual people in the audience?
Yes, yes, and he will, come on up, uh, they're going to make a presentation, and then we ask you to open the public hearing at that time.
Okay, so if, if you heard them on the phone, we're gonna let them do the recommendations, which is coming out of, out of number four, and we're gonna run it concurrent with the public hearing, so that if anybody has any questions, we'll be able to pick it up from there. But we have social distancing tonight, so congratulations on, on, um, making it through the planning and zoning process, and we look forward to hearing from them.
Do you guys need any copy?
I think, I think we have.
You can just leave those with, um, Marty, and we'll get those distributed.
Okay, my name is Perry Smith, I'm representing the Signature Automotive Group with an opportunity for conditional use, I think it's eighteen thirty-six Mount Zion Road, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to present today. Uh, I'm just gonna give an overview because of the, uh, towards the time we have the presentation.
I'm sorry, if I might interrupt one moment, this is Councilwoman Knight, uh, does the gentleman have a microphone?
Yes.
He does, um, he's gonna speak into a closer, how about that?
Yes, is that better?
Yes, you're the last person to use it tonight.
Okay, my name is Perry Smith, I'm presenting the opportunity for a conditional use for the Signature Automotive Group at location eighteen thirty-six Mount Zion Road. I wanna thank you all for the opportunity to present today. And what we're trying to bring is something new and innovative to the automotive industry. Our first location, and we started with this franchise, and we're hoping, hoping to open twenty within the next five years on the southeast of Atlanta. I live in Jonesboro, so Morrow location where you used to have the, um, at eighteen thirty-six, it used to be, I think, an empty place here. We'd like to use that location. One of the things we wanna do is upgrade that from an industrial look to a more luxurious look. If you remember in your presentation, we have, we wanna have a very luxurious lobby. The customers will come in and overcome this sensation that they get of dirty, arid area. They have something very luxurious with a, a sense of having also a snack bar with the eat and relax. What we want them to feel is just as comfortable in our shop as at home, however. This is seen now with, with the cover nineteen thing, which we're gonna be talking about a little later. We also want to make sure that they have a sense of integrity visibility, so they can look at their invoices from home. We also give them an opportunity to look at their repairs, uh, with the parts too. So if they wanna look at their repairs or the parts, people are concerned that they are being overcharged for parts or repairs. For the top end, if you look at the national study, so we would give them an opportunity to have onsite view of their parts at any time or their repairs at any time, complete transparency is what we want. So we have online ability to look at their cars if they're at home, if they call and want to see how that car is going. We call, see, and believe, so we want them to see everything that we see. That's one of the advantages that we have a group there. We also, we have what's called pickup and drop-off service. So if the customers are home, now at least lots of us have, so we, we, we brought this on prior to that, but we will pick them up and drop them off. The cost of that may vary based upon the average ticket. We will pick them up and, and drop them off, and at that time, we wanna do three things with the communication. Make sure we have an initial communication with them of what the quote may be, and then if there's an upgrade, you have to approve it prior to that. And the final ticket that they receive at the end will not be any ticket that they're not pre-approved before, which will handle, handle the fact that people being perceived that they may be overcharged for any of their repairs that they receive. The final thing is that our average cost is below the average cost of repairs in the, if you look at the average cost of repairs throughout Atlanta, we're below the average cost of repairs. Our warranties are longer, and our transmisses were one point five to four years, industry standard is about twelve months. Uh, engines, if it's used, are anywhere from three months to three years, industry standard is thirty days. If you look at new, we are somewhere from three to five years on wind miles. Industry, industry standard are, is anywhere from twelve months to three years. If you look at the opportunity of financing, uh, anytime that a repair happens, this is an expected event for a customer, unexpected event for a customer, and it may affect them negatively. So we want to, we do offer for them different financing alternatives, whether they have good credit, bad credit, or no credit. We offer financing to try and help them through this, this bit that they may, you know, then take it by surprise. And so we offer that to the customers overall. Now, the final thing is that since this cover nineteen thing has come about, it's really changed the way we look at our repair. We're offering now what we call a cover nineteen repair, where we pick off, pick up, or drop off the customer. We can, they can either bring their car, or we take them home, or we can pick up their car and drop off. Whichever way we receive it, the first thing we do is sanitize the car upon receiving it. We have online invoices, so they can look at their cars from home, and feel the comfort of being taken and not being overcharged. We also still have online gear that repairs, so they can look at their repairs wherever they can be, as if they were at our shop. We sanitize also before delivering, we do a quality check before we deliver the car, and we allow customers to do it once they receive the car, but we are trying to not make any contact with customers based on the things that are going on right now. They can also pay upon completion online and not have to come into our office at all. So these are things that we're offering overall, I think, for the office and the Morrow citizens, that's an upscale lobby, cleaning and comfortable snack bar with several televisions in the area that allow them to, if they want to sit in our lobby, enjoy the presence while they're there. Uh, the second thing that we're offering, trust and transparency, see and believe, or convene some professional, professionalism, try to make something a good event, it's a bad event, that they need to find some sense of comfort doing this part. And then we have a commitment to, uh, partnership with customer quality, community, uh, and continuous improvement. Try to make that as short as possible, you guys.
Excellent.
Is there any questions at all?
Oh, without questions, actually. Um, it should be noted that the planning and zoning board recommended approval of the applicant's conditional use. Uh, there was at least, uh, well, actually, one, one stipulation, um, but you have that in front of you. Do we have any questions? Councilwoman Dean?
Yes, um, uh, good eve- good evening, uh, I had the opportunity to be in planning and zoning meetings, uh, when they did their presentation, and I thought it was, um, unique, and something that, um, I think the City of Morrow would, um, uh, benefit from, so I, I really enjoyed greeting them, and I think they're, they'll be an asset to the city.
Excellent, uh. Councilwoman Knight?
I have no comment at this time.
Councilwoman Tran, or not, Councilwoman Quah?
No comments.
Councilwoman Tran? There's no comment, is that what you said? Okay, um.
Yeah, no question, no comment.
I'm, I'm gonna ask a question to, uh, Marty Tracy, and just in terms of the, we, we know they have the, the required amount of property. Um, there is a reference in here to existing chain link fence, we realize there's some undeveloped property that might be developed in the future. Um, tell us a little bit about what the, uh, the, the, the stipulation was and, and the reason for that.
Well, the stipulation about fence, the, uh, chain link fence is not compliant with code, it's all rusted, it has more wire. Uh, also, the installation of a decorative fence will enhance the overall appearance of the property, plus give him security for vehicles to have to be kept on property longer.
Any other issues there?
None at all.
Mayor, would you like to repeat that so that the conference callers can hear you? Because I bet they didn't hear Marty.
Uh, basically, it, it was both from an aesthetic standpoint, in, in terms of what is existing now, so on the mark, um, and then ultimately to be able to protect, uh, the, the, their clients' new cars or cars that they're servicing, um, and even a vehicle of people, there are at least three vacant lots nearby that, that could be built out in the future. Um, and, and the, um, the, the petitioner has no issues with the stipulation as well. Um, that being said, uh, do I hear a motion?
So move.
I hear a motion for
So move.
At, at the second, here by Councilman, uh, Dean, all those in favor, uh, with the stipulations as required by the planning and zoning board specifically written into, um, the, their recommendation, uh, say, say, by saying aye, um, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quah?
Aye.
Motion passed, adjourned. Thank you, sir. We do appreciate you locating the City of Morrow, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item? And that ends the public hearing for that, just as long as
So Mayor, here, uh, under ordinances and resolutions, this is where you'll add the C, which is Resolution twenty twenty dash zero five.
Got it. Okay, second reading of the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty oh two, amendment fee schedule to include rental fees for the pavilion, the community room, and the walk-in center. Um, we've had those, uh, for a couple of weeks, those have been published, and we had that discussion at the last council meeting. Are there any further discussions by members of the council? Councilwoman Tran, any additional discussion? Council, Councilwoman Dean, any further discussion?
No.
Councilwoman Knight, any further discussion?
None at this time.
Ms. Quah, none?
No.
Ms. Tran, did, did I hear any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, um, uh, uh, anyone, uh, let's put this one, uh, we have before us, uh, ordinance twenty twenty, it's a second reading. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, vote by saying aye, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Quah?
Aye.
Motion passed, adjourned. Resolution twenty twenty dash four, to update the occupational tax process. Um, what we have here is where traditionally, uh, a small business, um, files their occupational taxes, and there's some forms to fill out. One of those forms requires net entries, the other ones require a, a number of things, including the taxes, uh, to be able to be laid out. So here, similar to what is being offered by the federal government or the state government, basically, you fill this information out, you attest, and, and basically, the city will accept that. The city does have a right to basically audit you. Uh, we do have the ability to go back in and get your last year's tax returns, uh, but the idea behind this is to make it as streamlined as possible, um, and for mostly small businesses, uh, to be able to do this. So large businesses, they're gonna have their regular, uh, taxes finished out in April or, or October, um, and this is more to help our small businesses, more more time and streamlining the process. Uh, are the, this is the second reading, uh, well, it's the resolution, I'm sorry, so it's the first section, but we didn't talk about it the last time. Are there any discussions or further discussions, uh, on, on this, uh, process? Any members of the council? Councilwoman Tran?
No discussion.
Councilwoman Knight?
None at this time.
Councilwoman Dean?
No discussion.
Councilman Quah?
No discussion for me.
No discussion? With that, um, basically Resolution twenty twenty dash oh four, uh, basically streamlining, uh, approval of grocery receipts for reviewing the occupational taxes for the City of Morrow, our small businesses. Um, do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Councilman Quah, do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Tran? Motion promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quah?
Aye.
Motion passed, adjourned. Emergency Declaration twenty twenty dash oh five. We received that later this afternoon, as I paraphrased earlier today, but the President of the United States, as well as the Governor of the State of Georgia, and I believe as well as the County Commission Chairman, as of late this afternoon. Um, have, uh, very degrees of, uh, a state of emergency, uh, which basically authorize, uh, certain things to take place, both through your city charter as well as their organizations. Uh, you had a chance to read that, and basically, it's a six-foot distance, no gathering more than ten people. You had a chance to read it, I won't read it all under the record. Uh, everyone's pretty much heard this stuff live time. Are there any discussions on the resolution? Councilwoman Tran?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
This, uh, Lord Dean, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Under what, uh, heading is, is this on the agenda?
Uh, this one is going to be ordinances and resolutions five, and it's gonna be C, and that's where we added it at the beginning of the agenda, so it's an item that wasn't printed in there for you, but it was added at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
Do you have a comment?
Uh, I have it.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
Uh, not a recent copy, but I have it.
Yes, okay. Any, any other questions? Councilwoman Knight?
No question.
Councilwoman Tran?
No question.
Councilman Quah?
No question.
Okay. No additional questions on the emergency resolution, um, uh, um, basically, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Councilman Quah, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Tran? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Quah?
Aye.
Motion passed, adjourned. Motion passed, as you announced. Approval of a small, a small business assistance plan. This basically is ratifying some of the actions the city has already taken. Uh, one was to install a local billboard encouraging our residents and others to shop locally. Um, one was changing the occupational business license, uh, time period from April first until July, June first, two thousand and twenty. One was, uh, changing your sanitation be, residential sanitation, is, is that just residential or is that commercial?
No, remember the commercial, but it's monthly.
Okay, okay, but it, it's modifying, uh, the new date from April first to June first, two thousand and twenty for our residents. Um, it basically allows existing residents, or, no, existing residents, existing restaurants that hold existing alcohol sales licenses, um, to, to be able to, uh, if they're getting into the takeout system, to, to be able to deliver sealed containers, an example, a bottle of beer, uh, to be able to send that to your house as well, to be able to give them as many opportunities to be able to sell, that's, that's pretty standard right now across metro Atlanta. Uh, weight restrictions, uh, on temporary banners and, and signs, uh, for commercial areas. Uh, we still would ask that you come in and get those permitted through the city if you can, depending on what they are, um, is that fair?
Uh, excuse me, Mayor, I have a question regarding that.
Yes, ma'am.
On the temporary banners and, um, 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 signage, are those banners, can we put something in about, um, if they should come in disrepair, that they need to be replaced?
Yes, ma'am.
They would still have to comply with all the existing codes which addresses disrepair.
Did you hear that?
Okay.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Okay.
Uh, and it allows, uh, the side, the lining panels, you know, now open, you know, different things to be able to attach to their tension. We realize that probably forty percent of our businesses right now are closed. So it's something that would allow that to happen. Uh, we're in the process of publishing a newsletter and distributing it to our, our residents, as well as offering some pre-advertising to our local businesses. And to reallocate some staff time, uh, where basically we have, for example, uh, our conference center right now is not being heavily utilized because of the group gathering issues. And we're reallocating those hours, if you will, uh, today, we're getting in touch with our businesses and support. And that way, those folks can still earn a living, and at the same time, we're, we're doing something for our own businesses. Do we have any, uh, questions in related to that, uh, business assistance plan? Councilwoman Dean?
Aye. No question.
Councilwoman Knight?
None at this time.
Councilwoman Tran?
No question.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No question.
That being said, I just want to ratify that, all those, uh, in, uh, I need a motion to approve, uh, the small business assistance plan that we've already put into place hopefully, and ratify that through our airbrush.
So moved.
So moved.
Councilwoman Tran, second. All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Aye.
Motion passed, as you announced. Approval for a forward, uh, selection of D M R, um, and, and it's basically, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run them both concurrently, cause I don't know that we're gonna have an issue with it, but... Uh, as stated earlier in the work session, we need a designated marketing organization. As stated earlier, we need, uh, somebody to coordinate some social media. I'm gonna pick up both of those items together unless I hear an objection, um, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Perfect, uh, Councilwoman, not, uh, uh, Dean, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Aye.
Item number seven and number eight have been approved, and we'll be accepting, uh, statements of qualifications for both the designated marketing organizations as well as the social media. If you have an interest in being able to provide the services, uh, please reach out to the city management and, uh, submit your resume or your applications or your statement of qualification. Item number nine, accept the, the donation of a Veterans War Memorial, or Vietnam Veteran War Memorial at City Hall. Um, we have Mr. Ung who has, uh, submitted a, basically, a, a memorial, a six foot tall, uh, cast bronze, professionally made, uh, request, uh, to be able to participate and locate that at City Hall. That will be in the front section of the city park. The city's obligation would be nothing more than providing the space, uh, this would be a combination of an American and a Vietnamese war memorial. Um, and the last one that was submitted, uh, is out front, it's better since nineteen ninety-three, we mentioned it in the work session. Are there any additional questions on that item? Councilwoman Tran?
Uh, no further question, I just want to make sure we add that the wording that the, uh, that you should be Vietnam War Mem- Memorial.
Okay, we'll do that in the motion itself, any other questions, Councilwoman Knight?
None at this time.
Councilwoman Dean?
No question.
Councilman Vaughn?
No question.
That being said, I would request that we approve the donation of the Veterans War Memorial, and, uh, Ms. Tran, as you stated, if you will say that motion for me, please.
I'm sorry?
Uh, I'm just asking you to stage your motion, um, so is the, uh, make a motion to approve the, uh, the acceptance of the donation of a Veterans War Memorial? To issue a permit, somebody can ask me this.
Uh, and also remember, you want to possibly add to the motion for you to negotiate the details, so we don't have to come back before the council.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so it's basically what we're asking for is the city, uh, the mayor to be able to negotiate, uh, with Mr. Ung and the Vietnamese community on the location, uh, and the style of, of, of the, um, the submitted application. Um, and that we would make as part of that motion, that it would be, um, it would match what they submitted, in terms of what their request was. It, it would match that it's professionally made, it would match that it is in cast bronze, um...
And it is officially called the Vietnam War Memorial.
And that it is officially called the Vietnam War Memorial, basically for the, the, the veterans that we have in the city of Marl. Do I hear a motion? Well, uh, other further questions, is there any other comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Come, I hear a first and a second, all those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye, uh, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilman Vaughn?
Aye.
Motion passed, as you announced. All right, purchase of a brush bandit chipper from Mason Tractor Company in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents. You've had that before you, that is a, a piece of equipment that has been used by the city before, it's got a pretty good track record. Uh, this is something that was submitted by the city council or the, uh, city manager, um, do we have any questions on that purchase item? Councilwoman Dean?
None at this time, no.
Councilwoman Knight?
None at this time.
Councilwoman Tran?
No question.
Councilman Vaughn?
No questions.
Hearing no additional questions, making a motion to approve the purchase of a Mason Tractor Company, um, basically, brush bandit chipper from Mason Tractor in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents. Do I, from Swatch funds, by the way, uh, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Dean, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilman Vaughn?
Aye.
Motion passed, as you announced. The city is in the need of, uh, of a city attorney, um, and most of the time it is appointed at the beginning of the year. We have asked for statements of qualifications, you have had a, a, a couple of options for, uh, at least a, a month, uh, to be able to review. And the, the city is recommending the approval of Smith, Welch, and...
Smith and Welch and the, for the mayor to negotiate the contract.
Smith, Welch, Webb, and White, um, and the mayor to negotiate the contract. Do I have any discussions on that? Any members, uh, Councilwoman Knight?
None.
Councilwoman Dean?
Um, I do have a question, uh, when you say, uh, we're negotiating on contracts or...
Well, I think it's the ability to authorize these signatures. Uh, we, we have another section, I think it's just, like I said, negotiating and, and, and authorizing us to sign a contract there and doing... Obviously, just any attorney, this is on a hourly basis, and it's up to us to make a choose, but...
With the information there, uh, uh, you're negotiating with the information that they're providing?
Yes, ma'am.
The council?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, uh, Councilman Vaughn, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. No further questions, and the motion basically to, uh, uh, approve, uh, Smith, Welch, and White, Smith, Welch, Webb, and White, as the, the city attorney for twenty twenty, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Tran, seconded by Councilwoman Dean, all those in favor, vote, uh, signify aye, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilman Vaughn?
Aye.
Motion passed, as you announced. Approval of a spill bucket repair in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. As we discussed in the last work session, this is basically related to the Lisa Field Hall in the back of City Hall, and it's related to a, a test that, that did not, um, that was not successful, and we need to have it repaired. Any discussions on that item?
No discussion.
Councilwoman Tran?
No discussion.
Councilwoman Knight?
None at this time.
Councilwoman Dean?
No discussion.
We've had that before us for at least a couple of weeks, it's recommended by approval by the city manager, um, and she's standing right here, she wants to say something, uh...
No, 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 I'm just ready for comments.
Oh, she's ready for comments, she's ready for what?
The next item.
Oh, the next item, okay, um, so I, I, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye, Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knight?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Vaughn?
Aye.
Motion passed, as you announced. Okay, now we're down to the general comments, right, unless we got something else? Okay, uh, general comments, uh, comments from the city manager?
I just wanna say that the city manager meeting on Wednesday at ten tomorrow is now a conference call, and the number and the access code are both on the website. So feel visit the website and call in to meet with us tomorrow at ten.
Did everyone hear that?
Yes, and I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
Do we get the virtual donut as well?
You can imagine, they do.
That's, that's, that's funny, that is funny, um, any, uh, uh, citizens, public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, I'm Lana LaBae, I'm a resident, uh, live on Twilight Trail. And I want to thank the city manager and the Public Works. About, uh, two weeks ago, on a Saturday morning, I was going to Walmart to shop for my eighty-nine year old neighbor, and somebody had stolen the stop sign off of the intersection of Ulrich's Marl Road and Twilight Trail. And you know how dangerous that road can be, and I want you to know, by the time I was returning from Walmart, Tony was there fixing it. I want to just thank those, those individuals, they worked so hard, even on a weekend, he was out there fixing it. And today, I was taking a picture of a seethole that's helped, uh, happening just, just yards from, from my driveway. Um, and I was taking a picture of it, and who's coming by, but Public Works, and they stopped, said, "What are you doing in the middle of the road?" I said, "I'm taking a picture of this seethole." I said, "Last week it was four inches, now it's about twelve inches." So they said, "Have you reported it?" And I said, "Not yet, I just took the picture," he said, "We got it." So I want to just thank the manager and our Public Works, they do a great job for Marl, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Comments from the city council? Councilwoman Knight? All right, uh, who's up, Councilwoman Dean? We have virtual comments for you.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to say as well that, uh, our, our Public Works, uh, department has been out there and, um, you know, some of the things that I mentioned about, you know, tree trimming and things like that, and my neighbors as well have, uh, made many, many positive comments about our Public Works department there. Great, uh, staff, and, uh, we really appreciate them.
Councilwoman, uh, Knight, do you have any questions or comments?
None at this time.
Councilwoman Tran? Ms. Tran, any comments?
Yeah, yes, I have a comment. I just want to say thank you for, to all the staff for being at job, the kids, the city open to service our community. It is a difficult time for our residents, for our businesses, but you are not alone. The city knows it's best to make sure you are safe, and, uh, we do what we can to support your businesses in Marl. We will get through this together.
Excellent. Councilman Vaughn?
No comments at this time.
Comments from the mayor, uh, maybe a motion by early, uh, we do appreciate everyone, um, understanding the current situation. It, it does look like the social distancing is gonna last for a while, um, but we will all get together and work with it. And as I stated earlier, um, if you need help, ask, this, this isn't the time to, uh, to, to sit back and take it on your own. That being said, um, we're gonna go right back into the work session, we have a number of additional, uh, interviews for Public Works Director, and this meeting is adjourned.